It's good to see a full house. How's everybody doing? All right, welcome to the April 22nd, 2025 Milbury City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Riley.
Here.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Present.
Vice Mayor Holliver.
Present.
Mayor Feng.
Right here.
All the members of City Council are present.
Thank you so much. And for those who are able, would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
Please be seated. All right, we begin tonight's council meeting with the ceremonial presentation proclaiming the month of May, 2025, as Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And today, we're thankful to have the Milbury Librarian of the San Mateo County Library, Francisco Ramirez, and also the Milbury Cultural Committee Treasurer, Marion Kong, accepting this proclamation in a moment. Whereas Asian American Pacific Islander API Heritage Month is recognized each May as a time to honor and celebrate the generations of AAPI individuals who have enriched America's history, shaped its culture, and contributed to the progress of our society. And whereas this month of May was selected to commemorate two significant milestones: the arrival of the first Japanese immigrant to the United States on May 7, 1843, and the inevitable contributions of Chinese immigrants to the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869. And whereas the diversity within the API communities reflects the multitude of languages, cultures, religions, and traditions that enrich the fabrics of our community and our society, fostering understanding, respect, and unity among Americans. Whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made important contributions to science and technology, culture, and the arts and professions such as business, law, medicine, education, politics, and economics. Their shared accomplishments and legacies are inspirational, significant, and celebrated part of the American experience. Whereas Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month provides an opportunity for all Americans to learn about and appreciate the enduring legacies and profound impact of the AAPI on the history and the future of our nation. Whereas the city of Milbury encourages all residents to observe this month with activities that honor the heritage and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to our community. Now therefore, we the Milbury City Council do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And then if I can have Mr. Ramirez and also Ms. Marion Kong joining us here at the podium? You have a few words of wisdom for us?
All right. So, thank you again for this meaningful proclamation, Mayor and City Council Members, recognizing May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. On behalf of the Milbury Library, I'm honored to accept it. And at the library, we're proud to celebrate the rich cultures, traditions, and contributions of the AAPI community, not just this month, but year-round. And we planned a variety of events for all ages that reflect the diversity and creativity of AAPI voices, including our Cantonese US Citizenship Classes, which occur every Thursdays where communities can prepare for the citizenship test in Cantonese with guided instruction and provided materials. And this kind of helps them make that path towards citizenship more accessible and welcoming. Moreover, I'd like to highlight our Japanese Storytime, which we have monthly, which is a joyful, interactive Japanese Storytime with songs, puppets, crafts, and storytelling. Moreover, I'd like to highlight our free computer classes that we have in collaboration with Tech Exchange, which is going to be beginning next month, which is a four-session class that is taught entirely in Mandarin, which offers essential computer help for our library members, where at the end of the course, they'll actually be able to keep that laptop and continue their digital access and learning. Moreover, I would like to highlight our performance that we're going to be inviting Jasmine Nicole, which is going to be mid-month next month. And she is a talented Filipino singer and songwriter, whose heartfelt performance will showcase her unique voice and her cultural roots. And lastly, I would like to highlight our scented sashay and calligraphy workshop, where participants will explore the traditions of the Dragon Boat Festival while making personalized scented sachets and learning the basics of Chinese brush calligraphy using the Four Treasures of the Study. And those are just some of the many programs that we have, but I just was wanting to highlight. Moreover, we're going to be creating some thoughtful book displays that highlight our AAPI authors' history and stories available for readers of all ages and backgrounds. And we invite everyone in the Milbury community to stop by the library, explore our offerings, and celebrate the vibrant diversity that makes our city so special. So on behalf of the Milbury Library, thank you once again, City Council staff, Mayor, and our friends of our library for your continued support for our mission to foster learning, inclusion, and connection across generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Ms. Kong.
Wow, what beautiful proclamations. Good evening, everyone. I am deeply honored to stand before you today as we come together to celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. This month is a time to reflect on the incredible contribution, rich cultural, and enduring resilience of the AAPI community. First and foremost, I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to Milbury City Council and the city government for recognizing the importance of this month and for creating space where we can honor the legacy of AAPI individuals who have shaped our history and continue to inspire our future. This recognition is not only just a celebration of our heritage, but also a testament to the strength and the unity we bring to fabric of this nation. From the art to the science, from business to public services, and our stories woven with preservance and innovation and deep sense of community enclosed together. Let us continue to honor our heritage, embrace our diversity, and pave the way for a higher and more inclusive future. And I am very proud, I am Asian Chinese, I'm Asian Chinese, but I'm also very proud, I'm an Asian American. I'm a citizen of America here, and then we're going to work together to make our country more beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your warm words. I just, anyone else from the council of anything for us? Vice Mayor Online, would you have anything? Okay, all right. I just wanted to highlight, AAPI history is American history. AAPI culture is American culture. And AAPI heritage is our American heritage. So, you know, no matter what the national narrative is, Milbury will forever and always be a diverse community that enjoys and celebrates and welcomes our diversity, our inclusivity, and equity for everybody. So to that end, thank you for being a part of us, and thank you for joining us today. Would you please join us at the podium for a little photo? All right, we have next up, and we have proclamation proclaiming the month of May 2025 as a National Historical Preservation Month. As a member of one, thank you.
Whereas the Preservation Month began as National Preservation Week in 1973 and in 2005, the National Trust for Historic Preservation expanded the celebration to encompass the entire month of May, offering more to honor the rich and diverse heritage found throughout the cities and states of our nation. And whereas historical preservation plays a vital role in promoting community and economic well-being by revitalizing neighborhoods, supporting local tourism, generating employment, and enhancing property values, all while preserving the character and the stories that shape our shared history. And whereas successful preservation efforts rely on collaboration of local governments, nonprofit organizations, businesses, homeowners, and community members working together to identify, safeguard, and celebrate significant places and landmarks. And whereas the city of Milbury honors its commitment to preserving local heritage, in 1985, the Milbury Historical Society relocated the Spring Valley Water Company Manager's House to Milbury Civic Center, where it proudly stands today as Milbury's Museum, a symbol of community pride and historical stewardship. And whereas National Historic Preservation Month provides an opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of historic preservation and recognize the dedicated efforts of individuals and organizations who champion the preservation of our built environment. Now therefore, we, the members of Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as National Historical Preservation Month.
And thank you for that. And then we have our Milbury Historical Society President, Mr. John Muniz.
Thank you, Mayor Feng, council members, and gentle people. Tonight, we gather to celebrate National Historical Preservation Month in a city that has stood the test of time. A city rich in history, resilience, and community spirit, Milbury has long been, has long become a beacon of progress and innovation, shaped by dreams and determination of those who came before us. Through the decades, Milbury evolved from a quiet town into a thriving community. The Milbury Dairy, the Sixteen Mile House, the Milbury Train Depot, and SFO became cornerstones of our early development, shaping the identity of our city. The people of Milbury, determined to chart their own course, fought for incorporation, overcoming legal battles, and opposition to officially become a city on January 14, 1948. But tonight, we celebrate not just our past, we celebrate our city as we enter the golden age of Milbury. Milbury has entered a new era of prosperity, innovation, and cultural vibrancy. Our city has become a hub of connectivity with the Milbury Intermodal Station, serving as a vital link between communities, bringing people together and fostering economic growth. Our community, our commitment to sustainability, education, and local businesses has strengthened the fabric of our community, ensuring that Milbury remains a place where families thrive and businesses prosper. As we look ahead, let us honor the legacy of those who built this city. Let us celebrate, embrace the future with the same determination and vision that brought us here. Milbury is more than a city, it is a testament to the power of the community, the beauty of progress, and the promise of a bright future. Thank you. I'd like to introduce some of our trustees tonight. Tom Dotty, our museum historian; Ray Gier, our museum facilitator; Gaetan Andrews, our secretary; and Paul Larson, our first vice president, who will take over my job eventually. And remember, please plan to visit our three museums: Milbury Museum, the Milbury Museum, located across from the library, open on Saturdays from 12 to 4 PM; our Milbury Carriage House, located in the rear of the Milbury Museum, open Saturday, 12 to 4 PM; and our Milbury Railroad Station, located on California Drive and Murchison Drive, open from 10 to 2 on Saturdays. Remember, the past is our key to the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for joining us, John. And thank you for being a stand-up member of our community. Thank you so much. Yes, we're going to do a photo together. Thank you, everybody. I know that photo is going to become historical. All right, proclamation. The next proclamation is for the month of May 2025 as Mental Health Month, and we have Councilmember C.C. Riley. And joining us today a little later will be the San Mateo County Mental Health Month Planning Committee Member and Star Vista Community Engagement Supervisor, Mr. Walter Ng.
Whereas, mental health is a vital part of overall healthy and well-being, and every individual, regardless of age, background, or circumstances, deserve access to care, support, and resources to maintain and improve their mental health. And whereas, mental health conditions affect people from all walks of life, impacting individuals, families, school, work practices, and communities. underscore the importance of compassion, understanding, and support. And whereas, every day, viewing of people face related to mental illness has meaning to face their mental health challenges alone for years. If left untreated, life expectants are 25 years shorter than the general population. And whereas, mental health and substance use conditions are treatable. Healthy conditions and the people who have mental health and substance use conditions can recover and lead a full and meaningful life. And whereas, every business, school, government, agency, health care provider, organization, and city share the burden of untreated mental health conditions, and benefits greatly from promoting wellness and supporting prevention efforts. Now, therefore, we, the members of Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim May 25 as Mental Health Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. And we have San Mateo County Mental Health Month Planning Committee Member and Star Vista Community Engagement Supervisor, Mr. Walter Ng.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager, Staff, and Residents of Milbury. My name is Walter Ng, and I again use the pronouns. I am the Star Vista, Star Crisis Community Engagement Supervisor. The Star Vista Crisis Center operates a 24/7 crisis intervention and suicide prevention hotline, handling calls, texts, and chats from both local and national. Supporting the mental health of San Mateo County residents, our crisis counselors provide immediate support, conduct suicide risk assessments, develop plans to keep people safe, and offer compassionate connections. Additionally, the Crisis Center facilitates mental health and suicide prevention presentations, as well as post-crisis interventions for local school districts, nonprofit organizations, local government agencies, and community-based organizations. These services were aimed to raise mental health awareness and foster resilience and support throughout our county. Thank you, Milbury, for proclaiming May 2025 as Mental Health Month. May Mental Health Month is observed across San Mateo County, the state of California, and the United States. Mental health is essential to a person's life in the same way as physical health. Hesitation to talk about mental health adds to the notion that the topic is forbidden. It is important to normalize conversations surrounding mental health, so people can feel empowered to seek the help that they need. Lime green is the national color for mental health and represents what we want to bring a light to an important issue that may be hidden or seen negatively. Mental Health Month is a key opportunity to reduce stigma, connect people to services, and promote wellness for mental health and substance use conditions. For San Mateo County and California, the 2025 May Mental Health Month theme is "Mental Health as a Continuum." The theme challenges the binary idea of healthy versus unhealthy mental health, normalizing the wide range of mental health experiences, and encouraging individuals to embrace and accept the full spectrum of their well-being. May Mental Health Month is important for me because as someone who guides discussions about mental health and suicide prevention to students throughout the county and also to communities across the county, I witness firsthand the profound effects of what mental health well-being and how it touches the lives of everyone every day. I see the struggles, the resilience, and the critical need for increased awareness, understanding, and support for those who have been impacted by mental health challenges. Starting today, I invite everyone to take action on one or more of the following options. Number one, wear a lime green ribbon. Wear one physically on your clothing or virtually on your social media profile that can spark a conversation to sharing your knowledge about mental health. Number two, learn about mental health resources available to you by visiting 988lifeline.org or samateocrisis.org. Number three, attend or host a mental health awareness event in your community during the month of May. Once again, thank you so much for your time, and thank you to Milbury City Council, community, and recognizing that May as Mental Health Month. Thank you.
And thank you for joining us today, and we all recognize how important, you know, mental health it is to our community, a lot of folks in our community. Oftentimes, this very serious illness get overlooked, and, you know, because there's a social stigma to that.
Correct.
But at the same time, it is one thing that really important to all of us and that we need to dedicate more time, resources, and attention to. Thank you so much for continue to uplifting the most vulnerable part of our community.
Thank you.
All right, can we join, can you join us for a photo opportunity? Thanks, everybody. And next up is proclaiming May 18 to 24, 2025, as National Public Work Week. Councilmember Rinaldi.
Thank you, Mayor Feng. This one's especially significant to me. Got a lot of love for our Public Works Department. It looks like one or two of you showed up tonight, so try to keep this as fast-paced as possible to get through this proclamation. All right. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Milbury. And whereas the infrastructures, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, or engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for these citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Milbury to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association with a themed People Purpose Presence, and now therefore we, the members of Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim May 18 through May 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week. Congratulations. Congratulations.
All right. Our Director of DPW, our most beloved, Sam Batista.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. The city of Millbury's Public Works mission statement is to provide essential services to the citizens of Millbury in a prompt, courteous, safe, efficient, and cost-effective manner. Through its dedicated employees, public works strive to plan, design, build, maintain, and operate public infrastructure in a manner that respects the environment and the ability to adequately preserve these assets for succeeding generations. Thank you, City Council, for recognizing our hard-working team. People Purpose Presence is this year's Public Works Week's theme, and public works dedicated employees keep the city running 24/7. They are either in the public eye or in the background working on vital tasks. Your Water Division works tirelessly on water main breaks that could last for hours. Your Street Storm Collections and Park Division are out in the early hours of the morning during storms to safeguard residents from floods and fallen trees. Your Environmental Programs Division educates residents and businesses on ways to improve their surroundings. Water Pollution Control Plant and Lab ensures that the city complies with the complex regulations of the Clean Water Act. Your Engineering and Administration Divisions help implement major projects as part of the city's grand vision. Your Public Works Team is always here for the residents and the businesses. It gives me great honor to accept this proclamation as it signifies a milestone in my over-25-year career in public service. I always knew I wanted to help people and solve problems, so back in 2000, I started my public works career in the Central Valley and made my way here to the city of Millbury, where in the audience, the former Public Works Director hired me. Thank you, Lou Sandrini, for hiring me. And I started here as an Associate Engineer in 2001. I was able to work on many interesting projects that allowed me to grow as an engineer, to meet and work with many residents who I still know today, and make an impact by working with other governmental agencies. In 2006, I left Millbury and made my way around northern San Mateo County to work in South San Francisco and Pacifica. But the values and work ethic I learned in Millbury built the foundation for my career. And thanks to City Manager Tom Williams, I returned to Millbury in 2022 to lead a great Public Works Department. And with the help of this outstanding staff, we were able to start and finish priority projects, receive grants, and work with the residents, businesses, and council members on important items like parking, traffic calming, renovating parks, and essential infrastructure. As I make my way to the state of Delaware, I know Millbury will always be with me. Since this is my last City Council meeting, I want to say thank you to the City Council for entrusting me with this department and the safety and the well-being of our residents. Thank you again, City Manager Tom Williams, Assistant City Manager Isabel Carlos, Finance Director Mike Sung, Community Development Director Andrew Mogensen, Recreation Director Hannah Moran, Police Bureau Chief Amon Allen, City Clerk Elaine Tran, Public Information Officer Justine Bleeker, Project Manager Eduardo Gonzalez, Fire Chief Dave Pucci, City Attorney Lori Liu, and the entire city of Millbury staff for your trust, support, and friendship. But most importantly, thank you to the Public Works Department, and thank you for all that you do. You guys make me look good. And so, at this time, City Council and audience members, I would like to introduce your Public Works Department. So as I call your name, please line up right next to the glass wall. So, Water Division is led by Leonard Harkness and is represented today by Joe Royas. Collection Division is led by Supervisor Chris Dunio. And here today is David Boiselli, Brett Powell, and Matt Leverini. The Parks Division is led by Supervisor John Genoli and is here with John Garcia. Your Environmental Programs Division is led by Andrea Papajon and is represented here today with Annabelle Acosta. Public Works Administration is led by Senior Management Analyst Heather Ruiz, and she's here with Vivian Peng and Charmaine Wright. The Street Storm Division is led by Supervisor Chris Felzone. And here, along with him is John Royas, Noel Gantley, Brad Rosinski, Chris Redman, Jan Maligasso, and Brian Malato. The Water Pollution Control Plant is led by Chief Operator Harry Kwong and is represented here today by Bob Munier, Darren Zoffarelli, Stephen Carver Hall, and Abel Zamora. The Garage and Facilities Division is led by Supervisor Joe Mendoza and represented by Dave Martinez, Evan Ramirez, Mike Martin, Michael Pentagos, and Sean Bow. The Engineering Division is led by City Engineer Ahmad Hayah. And tonight, we have Senior Engineers Nicole Tendell, Senior Engineer Armando Mora, Amer Zerika, and Christian Alakon. And that tonight is your Public Works Department. And of course, last but not least, is your Deputy Director of Public Works, extraordinary Craig Sensus. And in closing, I want to thank everyone for being part of my journey and my success. So, happy Public Works Week. Thank you.
All right. Don't go too far yet. We have a public comment. We have a hand raised online.
First speaker, I mean only speaker, is Ann Snyder. And then, we actually have a second speaker. Ann Snyder, please. Ann Snyder, please accept the mute.
Hi, I was at Congressman Mullins' event. Just a comment on the Proclamation for National Historic Preservation. I've been a member of the National Historic Preservation for probably 30 years. But critical and for the new... Oh, this is Public Works. I'm sorry. I thought it was public comment. My apologies. Yay, Public Works. Bye.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, we'll save all the other hand raised a little later, but I just wanted to say, you know, the entire Public Works Department, you know, you guys are the heroes. Every rainy seasons, you know, whenever a tree was, tree branches went down, you know, there's a water main that needs service, or, you know, when we're expecting a storm, clearing out all the storm drains and ensuring that all the most crucial and important infrastructure in the city work the way it should work. Most of us just sit at home and expect our water to be delivered when you turn on the faucet. And when you flush the toilet, you expect it to go, right? Which is true. And when you, you know, flip the switch, you expect light to turn on. But a lot of that has to do with, you know, this dedicated team behind the scene every day, working days and nights, and oftentimes, you know, into the wee hours of the evening. So that those who wake up in the morning and try to send their kids to school or go to work every day, get to turn on the faucet and be able to use all the vital services that we provide as the city. And then, at the same time, also keeping everybody safe during the, you know, during the stormy seasons as well. So you guys are the hero for the Millbury residents. All 23,000 of us should really give you a great deal of gratitude. Thank you so much. Yeah, this one week is not enough to celebrate all that you do. And not, you know, obviously, not to mention the leadership that Sam and you had provided to our team for the last three years. Thank you so much. And don't go away yet. You know, we have a little bit more time. You know, we're not done with this meeting yet. So at this time, I'd like to thank our entire DPW team. Anyone else on the council want to say anything to our unsung hero here?
Just a real quick thank you to all of you. I have family that's worked in public work, so I know what goes into it, especially when it's the weekend and you're carrying the phone in case of an emergency and you get called out in the middle of the night. So, like Mayor Fung said, we expect our services to work, and oftentimes, we forget that there's people behind them. So thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts for making sure the city doesn't collapse on us. And to Sam, thank you for all your service through Millbury, and you're going to be greatly missed.
All right. Councilmember Riley.
Thank you so much for all of your hard work so we can have safe, sweet water to drink and have a beautiful city and have a beautiful community. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And Sam, we will miss you. Thank you.
Councilmember Webb.
Yeah, I can relate. Like, in my line of work, engineering, it's pretty challenging in that people just expect stuff to work, like as the mayor mentioned. But moreover, it's about the appreciation isn't expressed how you normally get a gratitude, like someone saying, "Thank you." I know in my line of work that when something bad happens, you hear a lot of complaints. But it's really, when you don't hear much complaints, that you know you're doing a good job. So I'll just say that you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
It's one department where no news is good news.
Right.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, everyone. I'd just like to echo those comments. You know, you folks are out there every day, every night, at every hour, whether it's... Every day is a workday, right? And we're all counting on you, and we're very grateful for all of the work that you do to keep our community thriving and safe. And Sam, thank you for your service the last few years here in Millbury. Glad you're able to come back after starting your career here many years ago. And I wish you all the best in your next chapter. So thank you.
Hey, Vice Mayor.
All right, don't go away. We have a public comment on this item. And the public really wanted to say a few words. Mary Ann Kong.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to all of you. I watch you guys working in the stormy weather, and I watch you. When I call, there's a down wire, you're there. And I watch you guys to pick the litter, trash, all over the city. And then, not to say is, you supported a lot of city events. Without you, our city event could not happen. And I thank you. And then, I never got a chance to really know Sam very well, but I wish you good luck in wherever you're going. But thank you, thank you. I am just one person here, but I'm representing a group of residents. Thank you all, okay? Thank you. I'll see you soon.
All right. Let's get a photo with our unsung hero here, huh?
Oh, boy. This is a lot.
Yes, I got it.
Just hang tight for a few more minutes. Just hang tight for a few more minutes. And then, we're gonna, we're gonna have an opportunity for a photo and a little bit of a celebration here for about 15 minutes here. So, City Manager, would you just go ahead and please move on with the presentation?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And again, I work with the ladies and gentlemen behind us, and of course, Sam and the whole team. And as what's been mentioned, the hard work dedication, 24 hours, seven days a week of this crew is just amazing and very proud to be a part of the team. So with that, as Sam had mentioned, Mr. Sam Batista is retiring. And so, it is really with a great honor and pleasure that, you know, as Sam had mentioned, his retirement, and he's actually really not retiring, he's retiring from California, but relocating to the state of Delaware, that we take a moment to really recognize and honor Sam's leadership and congratulate him, obviously, on a great career here in California, and wish him all the best as he moves to Delaware. His many years of dedicated service, not only in the city of Millbury, South San Francisco, Pacifica, and what he brought back to the city of Millbury. I think your first year here was one of the worst storms in the history of the city. And immediately, Sam was called to help lead Sunday nights, Monday nights, Saturday nights, Friday nights, to take us through those torrential storms. So he's been instrumental in really organizing and preparing our capital improvement program that will be presented to the City Council here in the next few weeks. Has really turned that around. The grant funding, Sam has been amazing in his grant writing and going out and getting grant funding awarded to the city over the three years that he's been here. Obviously, the redesign, construction of Marina Vista Park. Soon, we're going to be breaking ground on Bayside Manor Park. So, Sam, it's been, it's bittersweet. You've been just so much fun to work with. Your professionalism, your expertise in engineering, your writing skills for an engineer are just absolutely terrific. You will be very, very missed, not only in Millbury, but I know throughout San Mateo County and the Bay Area. So it is with great congratulations that we honor you this evening with a commendation. I know that the City Council, the mayor, also has a proclamation for you as well. But if I may, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just to Sam. The city of Millbury proudly recognizes and thanks Director of Engineering and Public Works, Sam Batista, for his years of dedicated service and impactful leadership. We extend our deepest appreciation to Sam for his vision, hard work, and commitment to public service. He leaves behind a lasting legacy that will benefit Millbury for years to come. So, Sam?
Something for your mental. And also, Director, I just wanted to say thank you, thank you very much. And I don't think we said enough of that, and certainly, you've heard a lot of that tonight. But first of all, you've been, you know, with us since 2001. A long journey of public service, not only here at Millbury, started 24 years ago, and then you came, you're gone, and then you come back, right? And, you know, you retire from here. And not only do you service the city of Millbury and all 23,000 of our residents and led a really, really wonderful and motivated team of professionals, you also serve the rest of the county, South City, you know, as you mentioned, some, you know, other parts of the northern county. And then, just ensuring people's quality of lives is as best as possible. You dedicated your service and your career to the people here in San Mateo County. I just cannot be more proud to be a part of that. Now, I'm very saddened to be the mayor to have to see you go, but I'm also thankful to be able to take part on your little journey here, here in city Millbury, and serving every single one of us and seeing how successful not only your career, but as well as your leadership to our DPW team and ensuring that, you know, every single one of 23,000 of us are being taken care of every day. And every stormy seasons, every tree branches, and every sewer lateral that needs to be upkeep. So, you know, with that, I wanted to just provide you with this commendation. I know this, the word is not even enough to describe your dedication and your professionalism and your contribution to all of us. But I wish you the best of luck as you continue on your next phases of your endeavor, whatever that might be. Do not go too far away. Delaware is only five and a half hours away on flight. East Coast is not as good as here in California. I can guarantee you that. And you can always rest assured that Millbury is always your home, and you can always come back to all of us at any time. And every single one of us, I think, would agree that we love you dearly. And thank you so much, Sam, for all your services and dedication. Millbury loves you. Thank you all.
So as the mayor's making his way down, we also can go out and get a photo, but we're gonna take about a... but we're going to take about a 10-minute break. We have some cupcakes and things to just celebrate Sam, so. All right, Mayor, yeah, 10 minutes and we'll, everybody else come back in and grab some cupcakes.
That was fun and the cupcake is certainly a good energizer. All right. City Manager, would you have more agenda overview and start breathing for the community, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. So this Friday, April 25th, marks the 27 years that Officer David J. Chakuti was gunned down on the 101 freeway as he was coming to the aid of a San Bruno Police Department employee, ended up in a high-speed chase on southbound 101 freeway. It was April 25th, 1998. And so this Friday morning at 9:00 a.m., with the Millbrae Police Bureau and Chief Eamon Allen, there is going to be a remembrance and celebration and honor of Officer David J. Chakuti, again, who was killed in the line of duty protecting our community on April 25th, 1998. And as I mentioned, this is in recognition of the 27 years to the date of that horrific, horrific day. So if everyone would join us in front of the Sheriff's Bureau Station, the Police Department Station, right out here on the front edge of Magnolia at 9:00 a.m. this Friday morning to honor David J. Chakuti in the memorial. All right, next, Mr. Mayor, we have, again, we have been announcing this, we have commission and committee recruitment, which is now open. It runs through the application process, runs through May 16th. And so the city is looking for residents who are passionate about making a difference in our community by joining one of our nine commissions or committees. And by joining one of these commissioners or committees, residents have the opportunity to influence policies, advise the city council on initiatives, gain value. in our community by joining one of our nine commissions or committees. And by joining one of these commissioner committees, residents have the opportunity to influence policies, advise the city council on initiatives, gain valuable experience about our community, and can really contribute in a meaningful way to the improvement and betterment of the Millbrae community. There are nine commissions and committees, each with a unique mission and goals to enhance the city and provide these policy recommendations to the city council. That's available on our website. But the, but real quick, the nine commissions and committees that we have vacancies are Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, Economic Development Advisory Committee, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Senior Advisory Committee, Sister Cities Commission, Youth Advisory Committee, and the new Citizens Oversight Committee, which is charged with meeting twice a year to review the fire assessment revenue and the increase in the TOT revenue. But people can log on to our website and learn more. They can also contact my officer, the City Clerk's Office, for any information. But the application process runs through May 16th. Secondly, or next item, you may have received a phone call or two from either County Manager, Mike Callagie, or a member of the Board of Supervisors regarding fair gate installation at the Millbrae BART station and BART stations throughout San Mateo County. So the reason for my explanation here is that BART intends to, they already have, as of March 31st, purchased fair gates for, new fair gates for the installation in not only the Millbrae BART station, but the other BART stations here in San Mateo County. They had a deadline of March 31st to purchase those fair gates, which they did. And the BART organization will be looking and submitting a grant application to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority. So I know, Mayor, you've been working on that. I've been working on that. And I bring this up, it's not on the agenda, but just wanted to bring to your attention that Mr. Callagie is probably reaching out about an MOU or reimbursement agreement for, he coins it as a bridge loan, but it's really an insurance that if the TA, Transportation Authority in San Mateo County, does not provide the grant funding for the fair gates, then the obligation for payment back to BART is, is what will be sought. And so Mike Callagie went to the Board of Supervisors, I believe it was on March 28th. They agreed to provide that backstop funding should the TA not fund the fair gates. And he is looking for the cities to reimburse the county if the county actually needs to pay BART back if, if BART is not successful in getting the grant funding. So I have asked him for an MOU. I've asked him four different times formally to send us what he had in mind for that agreement, and I'm still waiting for that agreement. So I will ask again, because I think it's important that he sends us the MOU to understand exactly what he has in mind, if in fact, he does need to backstop, which we don't think he will, but the county has to backstop the funding if, if BART is not successful with their grant funding. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Waiting for the MOU from the county. Once I receive that, we will review it and then bring it to the city council ultimately for review. All right, next, today's Earth Day, officially Earth Day, so happy Earth Day to everyone. And as we celebrate Earth Day and Arbor Day, we're excited to announce that this Saturday at 9:00 a.m., Millbrae will be celebrating Earth Day by planting trees along Taylor Boulevard and Minorca Way. And this is actually in front of Taylor Middle School, where the parking lot is, and where Taylor Middle School meets the Spur Trail. And so we are going to continue our plant, tree planting program along that corridor that, that stretches between the parking lot at Taylor Middle School and the, and the Spur Trail. So that is, starts at 9:00 a.m. this Saturday. I believe there's approximately 25 trees to be planted, so we're looking for volunteers to, to help us do that. And then we will, we, the city, will provide all the supplies and a lunch for everybody that participates and works. So we hope to see a lot of people to celebrate Earth Day and Arbor Day and tree planting, 9:00 a.m. out in front of Taylor Middle School on Taylor Boulevard at Minorca Way. Also, in celebration of Earth Day, the following day, we continue with our Eco Fest. This is Sunday, April 27th, at 10:00 a.m. This is hosted in conjunction with the city and Outdoor Supply Hardware, located here in the city of Millbrae, where people can enjoy expert talks on gardening, composting, recycling, water conservation, and this will be led by a master gardener. People will also, in attendance, hear from local environmental leaders, including the Peninsula Clean Energy, Commute.org, and South San Francisco Scavenger. There will be a barbecue that will be hosted by Outdoor Supply Hardware for all attendants. And so anybody that's interested in learning more about gardening and the environment, that's April 27th at 10:00 a.m. at Outdoor Supply Hardware here in the city of Millbrae. Also, Saturday, May 10th, starting at 10:00 a.m. and ending at 2:00 p.m., is the Millbrae Bicycle Rodeo. So if everyone can join us on the blacktop, the basketball courts by the ball fields at Taylor Middle School, this is in conjunction with the Millbrae Sheriff's Bureau. And people that, and attends can learn about bicycle safety. The Sheriff's Department will be setting up a, a navigation course for, you've probably seen it, turning and, and, and different obstacles. The kids can ride their bikes. There'll also be a free helmet giveaway courtesy of the California Highway Patrol. I think there's probably going to be, you know, 200, 300 helmets. CHP always gives them all away, so it's first come, first served. So all attendees that, that are present will also be entered into a raffle to win a series of kids' bicycles, both boys and girls. And there'll be boosts for emergency preparedness, disaster preparedness, and information and more. So that's the Millbrae Bicycle Rodeo, Saturday, May 10th, at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. over at the Taylor Middle School Basketball Courts. After the bike rodeo, people can also check out the same day as our Millbrae Art Show, hosted by our Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. That starts at 10:00 a.m. and ends at 4:30 p.m. So this is, people can enjoy entries by local artists, not only in Millbrae, but throughout the Bay Area, and that will be held over at the Recreation Center. So that is our annual Millbrae Art Show, May 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. at the Recreation Center. And Mayor, that concludes an update on what is happening.
Thank you very much. And can I also get a report out from April 22nd, closed session, please?
Good evening, Mayor. There is no reportable action.
Thank you very much, City Attorney. And moving on to approval of minutes, we have special meeting minutes of April 8th, 2025, and also the regular meeting minute of April 8th, 2025. Any comment from council members?
Mayor, if I may note, since we have Vice Mayor joining us from a satellite location, we do need to roll call votes. So if you want a motion, please make sure that you do a voice motion as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any comment on the April 8th, special or regular and/or regular meeting minutes? Seeing none, I'll take a motion?
Motion to move forward.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi and a second from Councilmember Nguyen. And any final comment, any public comments? Seeing none, and we need to do a roll call vote. Yeah, not that, but we need to do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
Mayor Fong?
Aye.
The two sub meeting minutes passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much. This evening, we do not have any oral report from city committees and commissioner, and that move takes us to the public communication, where this portion of the agenda is reserved for those who wish to comment on items not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, speaker must address subject matter within the jurisdictions of the city council. Every speaker will have three minutes. The speaker is to address directly to the entire council, not individual council members, nor the public. We will start with in-chamber speaker and then move on to online speaker after. First up is Mr. Lou Sandrini.
Mayor Fong, council members, during the past 15 years, garbage rates have been set using the CPI and some random and arbitrary averages of other cities' rates. The rate model has no connection to the actual cost of our services. It guarantees a rate increase to the garbage company every year. A rate view is needed to determine the degree of correlation between the model and the actual cost of service. Not doing a review for 15 years, and we have not for 15 years, would be irresponsible. I have recommended a review and have not received any feedback from any members of the council. I now ask for a meeting with you, Mayor Fong, to bring this matter to a close. Do you schedule a meeting with me? Councilmember Nguyen's always agreed to meet with me. I have met with Councilmember Rinaldi. And Councilmember Riley, would you schedule a meeting with me, talk about this subject so we could clear it up?
I already replied your email.
You will?
I did.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that this is not a, a back and forth session, this is a public comment.
It's a request.
I, I understand. You can make your requests, you make your request, but we're not here to respond.
Well, I'm not expecting you. Okay. You're agreeing, you have responded, thank you. And Vice Mayor Ruben Holliver, will you agree to schedule a meeting with me to resolve this matter? Well, I have three out of five, that's better than none. It's interesting that we don't take this subject on voluntarily. Not as voluntary, as a business responsibility. We do water rates every few years, we do sur rates, hold ourselves accountable. For 15 years, we have not done with the garbage company. The garbage company rate model has nothing to do with their cost of service. They proposed the model, they said, let's do it this way, and the city accepted that model without any reservation. That's been moving for 15 years, no accountability, no idea how the rates would correlate with the cost of service. Really unconscionable business matter, public trust violated completely. Well, I'm looking forward to meeting with the ones I mentioned. I would hope the mayor and the vice mayor might think about it and be willing to help. I'm in your district too, okay? And I can't help but think it would help us to sit, sit down and talk about it. I have 12 years of experience with this garbage company in the past, so do know a little bit about it. I think it could help, help all the rate payers in a fair deal. Why not do it? Would you please, like to, why not do it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sandrini. We'll take the online speaker and then we'll...
Mr. Mayor, while the city clerk is getting the online speakers, I would just, I think it's important for the public to be aware and remind for the public benefit that public comment is just for people to address the council, because items are not on the agenda and agendas, the city council cannot respond to members of the public during public comment.
All right, the first speaker is X. X, if you please accept the mute and also state your full name for the record, please.
Yes, good evening. This is Grace Shora. First, I want to express my respect for the Vice Mayor and the three council members. I think you guys are doing a commendable job, and I don't fault you for anything I'm about to say, because I don't believe that you had any involvement in the process. Last week, I reached out via email to Mayor Fong regarding a concern, and since I haven't received a response, I'd like to put my thoughts on the public record. At the April 8th council meeting, the city issued a proclamation recognizing April as Arab-American Heritage Month. That is a noble and important cause, and the language of the proclamation was thoughtful and appropriate. However, I was deeply troubled by the choice of the individual who accepted the proclamation, somebody affiliated with ARCA, an Arab Resource and Organization Center. This organization has been involved in actions such as blocking the Port of Oakland and the Bay Bridge, assisting in San Francisco school ceasefire walkouts, and following October 7th, on their Instagram page, they posted inflammatory comments like Palestine is rising, Gaza is rising, placing full blame for all the violence in the area on Israel. If the speaker who spoke on October 8th is who I believe he is, I have seen videos of him spreading inflammatory and misleading narratives, for example, claiming Arabic is not allowed to be freely spoken in Israel. And on October 8th, he used the platform that you provided him with to accuse the U.S. government of disappearing people and to claim a genocide of his people. No mention of Israel and what was happening to their citizens. He turned the moment of recognition into one of division and rhetoric. Recognizing heritage should be about building unity and inclusion, not offering a platform for hate and misinformation. So I would suggest in the future that there is a vetting process for picking people who accept proclamations and maybe even pre-screening their narrative. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, the next speaker is Ann Snyder. Please accept the mute.
Good evening, happy Earth Day. Just wanted to give you a quick update on what the Board of Supervisors did this morning. They had a presentation from our, the housing staff on community development block grants. And whereas I had not been able to find out if the funding of community development block grants that go to cities greater than 50,000, if the county was getting the small city portion, today at that presentation, county staff said, yes, the county receives the housing urban development funds called CDBG, they get the small city portion from that. And what they did this morning was look at the six or so programs that they are going to fund from that. I want to give a huge shout out to Supervisor Canepa, who brought up during that discussion whether or not any of those funds came to the cities north of Burlingame, not including the two 50,000 greater cities, South City and Daly City. Anyway, it's something to be on the lookout, it is something I'm monitoring, because my gut and a little bit of data is saying that a certain number of cities in San Mateo County have gotten the bulk of these CDBG funds, the county portion, or really the small city portion, for building affordable housing. Therefore, they're getting their affordable housing subsidized where we, as Millbrae, are not. Second comment, thank you for Historic Preservation Month, because there are new council members. The reason you've heard me talk about this is when you read environmental impact documents, especially federal documents, so the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA. If, if a city has, or a community, or a neighborhood has a designated historical zone, then the person or the entity trying to do a project has to do more work and has to mitigate. So if you read SFOs, Sea Level Rise Plan, and any of their previous EIRs, it specifically says, Millbrae is not historically designated, therefore, we do not have to do this research. High-speed rail did the same thing. Congratulations on that tonight, but know that these big entities, especially if they get federal funding, then they get, they have to use NEPA, as well as CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. But there is a reason to go beyond just dedicating a proclamation every year and looking into some serious historic preservation work, because it gives us tools in our toolbox to fight the entities, entities that are bigger than us. Sorry, guys, I got a cold today, entities on that. So yay for the proclamation, but we've got some beautiful buildings.
We should be getting them designated downtown. It'll give us more ability, it'll bring us in more funding. Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Joe iPhone. And Joe, if you could go ahead and state your full name for the record, please.
Good evening, this is Joe Teresi. I live at 5 Blue Bell Court in Millbrae, and I'm zooming in this evening to resume my crusade to encourage the Millbrae City Council to resurrect the, the city's Social Equity Committee. I don't really have anything new to say, I've spoken several times now without any result. I did note when City Manager Williams mentioned the, the nine commissions and committees that the city has, he didn't mention the Social Equity Committee, which has been shelved for almost a year now. And as I've said in the past, I really do think it's time to, to bring it back. I don't see any negatives to resuming the process that was initially started and endorsed by the council. It's already been funded. There's already a consultant selected. There's already committee members who are enthusiastic to resume their work. You heard at the last city council meeting from Dean Lon, who spoke about his personal experience and the benefits of the committee that he's experienced as being a member of the committee. I would encourage you to reach out to other members of the Social Equity Committee to hear their experiences, which, from my understanding, are mostly all positive. And I just think it's time to at least bring it back to the council for a discussion. I don't really understand why there's been this hesitancy to even discuss it in a public forum again. And I guess in closing, I would just say I would just encourage you with much enthusiasm to please agendize this for discussion and bring back the Millbrae Social Equity Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Nathan Chan. Nathan, please accept the mute.
Hello. Nathan Chan here, 151 El Comunal Real in Millbrae. I just wanted to echo Mr. Terese's comments. In October of 2024, Mayor Fung was quoted in the Daily Journal as saying, "I think the Social Equity Commission is something that we should probably bring back to the new council with some direction. I do believe there is a place for a social equity commission to be productive within the city. Seven months have passed since that hopeful statement. I think the commission began with a lot of promise and money was appropriated to fund this work. I think it is important for this work to continue, and I hope the council agrees. I hope you will find time to discuss the future of the commission at a future meeting. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Mayor, that's all the speaker slips that we have and the public speaker on line two.
Thank you very much. And all right. So that brings us to the end of public communication. Moving on to consent calendar, item number five, receiving file monthly general fund financial report for the period ending March thirty first, two thousand twenty-five. Adoption of a resolution awarding an auditing contract to Badawi and Associates for Professional Auditing Services and adoption of a resolution to establish the Citizens Oversight Committee to review the fire assessment and also the transient occupancy tax. And that's item number seven. Anyone want to pull any item from the consent calendar? No hand raised? Any public comment on any of these three items?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to move forward. Accepting them?
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi.
I'll second that.
We have a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Any final comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hollibur?
Aye.
Mayor Fung?
Aye.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of five zero.
Thank you very much. And tonight, public hearing, there is no item within the public hearing. And moving on to existing business, item number eight. Acknowledgement and acceptance of the agreement between the city and the California High-Speed Rail Authority to settle the city's lawsuit challenging the environmental impact report and statement for the High-Speed Rail segment from San Jose to San Francisco. City manager, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an information item, and as many of you may have read, there was a press release that went out and was in the local media and across, I believe, the state of California about a terrific milestone that we finally reached agreement between the city of Millbrae and California High-Speed Rail. This agreement with California High-Speed Rail is to settle a lawsuit that the city filed regarding the environmental impact report pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act that challenged the environmental clearance for the portion of high-speed rail from San Jose through Millbrae into San Francisco. That includes a station and other facilities on the west side of the existing BART station here in the city of Millbrae, just north of Millbrae Avenue. So wanted to just provide public recognition. This is, like I said, a long time in the making with our relationship with California High-Speed Rail. The collaboration within the terms of agreement on station access issues to ensure future travel to and from Millbrae's high-speed rail station, that it's smooth, it's seamless for pedestrians, vehicles, and other modes of transit. The land use planning within the transit area, the planning efforts on the west side of the station to bring additional transitory development, consistent with the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan on which High-Speed Rail has based its future plans. This provides the pathway forward for Millbrae and the property owners on the west side of the transit station to move forward. California High-Speed Rail's design of the new intermodal high-speed multi-transit station on the footprint of the existing BART station, this clears the way for them to commence with their planning in conjunction with the city of Millbrae, but also the other transit agencies, including BART, SAM Trans, and Caltrain. So those are really kind of the three elements to this. And wanted to just provide public recognition, thank the city council for the hard work, the many closed sessions, the discussions to move this in a positive direction, really in the best interests of the city of Millbrae. And this clears the way for the implementation of the buildout of the west side of the transit station.
And just wanted to thank the city manager for working the last few years. Also, you know, with the outside council and working with High-Speed Rail, building those consensus and, you know, eventually coming together, you know, at this juncture, two thousand twenty-five, right? Being able to invite the CEO of the High-Speed Rail to come visit their city, have a discussion, and, you know, eventually coming down to this settlement and agreeing to move forward in our respective, you know, domain. And this really is a monumental milestone for the city where we're now finally able to regain control of the west side of the station so that we can guide the future development of the city, you know, both housing, economic development, what needs to happen west of the station. This is a very important milestone for us so that we can, you know, actually take advantage of the potential that this, you know, high-speed rail station and intermodal station meant for us as a city. And also at the same time, you know, giving the High-Speed Rail also the real estate they need in order to build out their stations, their track, their platform, so they can be successful here at Millbrae in the future as well. And also, not to mention, with this settlement, we're able to receive a $225,000 funding from High-Speed Rail as well. So this is certainly a win-win for both, you know, both Millbrae and the High-Speed Rail. And just, you know, being a good regional partner, which is what this council is, you know, committed to do. Being, you know, a fair, equitable and respectful regional partner is what this council intends to be. And this is what this settlement represents. And so that Millbrae can move forward and realizing the potential that we see for ourselves. So, you know, I'm excited that this finally gets done. Takes a lot of work and a lot of dedication, a lot of negotiation. But I'm thankful that this council is able to get this done at this juncture. So I'm just proud of the cooperation here with all my colleagues.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, a long time making, and thank you for bringing up the payment of the $225,000 reimbursement from High-Speed Rail. Very important and shows the collaborative effort between the city of Millbrae and High-Speed Rail as things move forward. I'd also like to recognize the great work of our negotiating team, Mr. Harry Burrows from HB Consulting and Mr. Tom McMorro from the law firm Minette. So many, many hours. So I'd like to recognize their great work in assisting the city in the negotiations.
Yeah. Thank you, Harry, for all the hard work as well, all the engineering hours and, you know, late night, seeing you at your desk, just looking at the maps and trying to find out what, you know, what's needed for us and what's also needed for High-Speed Rail and also making sure that both agencies can succeed at this very important, one of the most important intermodal station in the western United States. Much appreciated of your work and also the legal team as well, like you mentioned a moment ago. Mr. McMorro, Tom McMorro, has been the lead attorney in terms of our effort in the negotiations with the High-Speed Rail and in ensuring that this is an equitable settlement. I'm making sure that Millbrae gets our fair share, you know, in this partnership. So thank you so much for his effort as well.
Mayor, I think it's appropriate also to thank High-Speed Rail.
Yes.
And their staff. Great meeting with Mr. Chadre, Ian Chadre, the new executive director of High-Speed Rail. Of course, several of their board members, Mr. Jim Gilmetti, all instrumental and really publicly thank California High-Speed Rail on the partnership they have with Millbrae through this effort. So.
Yep. And yep, that's right. I mean, we've been speaking about this for many, many years where four hundred eighty-eight units of housing, right? Hundreds of thousands of square feet of office space. You know, when TOD one project was first approved, and we were so hopeful that it could finally get built. A project such as this was not able to get built, you know, back in the days when, before this settlement, where High-Speed Rail, you know, on their EIL stipulated an eminent domain of, you know, eight acre and putting eight hundred spaces of surface parking, that now as part of this settlement is no longer going to proceed. So we will maintain the west side development and the control and the land usability. So I think this is really a major milestone for all of us. So with that said, anyone else on the council or a vice mayor? Go ahead. Councilmember Rinaldi and then followed by Councilmember Nguyen, and then we'll come back to, and then we'll come back to Councilmember Riley after.
Thanks, Mayor Fung. Just want to say that this is a monumental occasion today. Talk about economic development and the potential for it. And what a win-win for everyone. High-Speed Rail, the city of Millbrae. For many a years, we've been talking about this lawsuit, what's been going on. And I'm just very, very thankful to the current council, past council members, city staff, the outside consultants that helped get this deal put together. And it's an exciting year to start off on this note, and it's going to be exciting to see the future. And also, from a standpoint of intermodal transportation hub, what a win-win in solidifying us still as the largest intermodal transportation hub west of the Mississippi. So very, very exciting and just very thankful to everyone. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Nguyen?
Yeah, I'd like to highlight how challenging it was, like, looking back. There's a lot of, without going into so much detail, of pieces that we had to move around to make this work. And after said and done, we were able to actually use the land now and make use of, and generate basically like all the taxes that we can get for the city. So I think it's a big win, and we hope to see better things coming forward about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Riley?
I want to say thank you so much for mayor and council member and past council member and manager, our city staff, attorney, who all involved this settlement. Not just bring our city $225,000, also regain the land use. I'm looking forward to see the area have the beautiful building and build this soon. And also thank you, High-Speed Rail, to willing to work with us. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you, Councilmember Riley. Vice Mayor, do you have anything?
Oh, sure. Briefly, you know, I think building out the station area has been a goal of this council for, I'm going to say thirty-plus years, I would say, since, I think, the original nineteen ninety-eight specific plan referred to that area as Site One. So this is something we've been hoping for for a long time. You know, I was on the council back in 2018 when that project, Sarah Station Development Agreement, was approved by the council. And, you know, High-Speed Rail and the conflicting conflicts between the developer and the station and High-Speed Rail Authority have been an impediment to getting that built. So I'm fortunate, I'm grateful that we're able to get past this impediment that we've had. And now it's up to the city and local property owners to be able to get the project built. So thank you to everyone for all the hard work on this over the last couple of years.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I believe we have a hand raised online. City clerk?
We do, Mayor. The speaker is Ann Snyder. Please go ahead and accept mute, please.
Thank you. Ann Snyder, Palm Avenue. Councilmember, where this was the major issue for seven years on that. Couple of questions that I cannot tell. The inadequacies in the environmental impact report, which gave us the ability to sue. So for all of the housing advocates right now that want to take away SEQA, SEQA gave us our ability to get to this point. And I hope the housing advocates, not any of you there sitting at council, but the housing advocates, take note of how important SEQA is in the process. But there were many, many inadequacies. It was not just being able to develop the west side of the station. It was the fact that they kept Center Street and the pedestrian crossing completely not in their plans. It was the fact that they were going to take the train museum and move it two hundred feet away from the railroad tracks, which would eliminate the history societies' plan to add a train that could make that an event venue, which would basically give us something for people to come to Millbrae with. I cannot tell if the train station is going to move. Is High-Speed Rail going to be a better collaborator in terms of getting people in and out of Marina Vista? There was many other things within the litigation on that. I understand I don't get to be in closed-door session anymore, so I'm happy for the rest of you. But there was a great deal of detail. And again, I would give a shout out to the gentleman, Mr. Gilmetti, who met one-on-one with us and talked about some of the options I can't talk about because they later went to closed door. But right now, what's happening to Marina Vista? What's happening to the train museum? Thank you.
Okay. Very well. Yeah, I just also want to bring about, you know, the importance of this settlement would enable us to build out California Drive as well. The California Drive realignment has been one of the most important, you know, traffic, you know, realignment to enable the west side development for the city. And with this settlement, this California Drive and the location where it needs to be and the ability to build it out, now we can finally get started with this very important project for all of us. So Sam, you got a few other things to do before you take off.
So, Mr. Mayor, real quick, on that question about the train museum, that will be preserved. Yes, it will be picked up by High-Speed Rail as part of their project, located. It will be moved to the west, but it will remain contiguous to the tracks as High-Speed Rail and when they build out, so that will be preserved.
Excellent. So, all right. Congratulations on that. Thank you very much. I think we just need a motion and a second to accept the staff report.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is just an information item.
Just information. You don't even need to accept the report?
No action required.
No action required. Okay. Very well. All right. Anyone else have any comment? Seeing none? All right. We're moving on to the next item. Item number nine, consideration of a Millbrae Community Benefit District Ad Hoc Subcommittee Recommendations to pause and rescind the petitions to initiate formal balloting to form the Millbrae Downtown and El Comunal Real Community Benefit District. City manager, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Community Development Director, Mr. Andy Mogensen, for the staff presentation.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council.
Mr. Mogensen.
Very brief presentation for you on this topic tonight. Next slide, please. Just some background. The city initially sought to form a Business Improvement District, Community Benefits District. Again, the names are interchangeable. Back in 2019, that effort was put on hold due to the COVID-19 pandemic. It was in May of 2023, the council adopted the formation of a Community Benefits District as one of their top priorities. In July of that year, the council reviewed a work program and subsequently contracted with New City America to assist with the district's formation. Next slide. The council previously heard an informational presentation on the proposed district at their March twenty-fifth, 2025 meeting. The April eighth meeting at the prior council meeting, as the property owner within the proposed district, the council considered the authorization to sign a petition in support of the balloting proposal. That item was on consent. It was pulled. The item was continued, and the council voted to form an ad hoc subcommittee to evaluate the matter further and provide a recommendation. Next slide. The ad hoc subcommittee convened on April eleventh, 2025, comprised of Mayor Fung and Councilmember Hollibur. Given the recent decisions at the federal level, the subcommittee recommended the council pause and rescind the petition due to growing economic uncertainty tied to evolving federal trade policies and the potential impacts on local businesses. If the council approves the subcommittee's recommendation this evening, staff will notify all the property owners within the proposed district by mail. And so the council action tonight is to consider the council Community Benefits District ad hoc subcommittee recommendation. ad hoc subcommittee recommendation to pause and rescind the petition process. If that happens tonight, then item number 10, of course, is the continuation of that petition consideration. And there would be a subsequent according vote on that item as well.
Okay, all right. City Manager, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Mayor, just here for questions.
Okay, perfect. Anyone on this council have any questions for our staff? Questions or comment? Vice Mayor, do you have anything?
No, nothing new at this time. I mean, you know, the subcommittee met shortly after the last council meeting, and I think, you know, there was direction from the council at the previous meeting to put this on pause for now. You know, it's not ending the idea. I think myself and I think others on the council are still supportive of pursuing this. But at this time, I think we are putting it on pause. And just something that was clarified to me is, due to the timing of the County Assessor's Office, when they would need this to be, Community Benefits District to be on the property rolls, basically, any delay at this time essentially delays the entire process for a year. So, it does give us some time to fine tune some of the details. But the formation of the district itself would be at least a year away. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I would, you know, just kind of bring about some of the current events that is happening, you know, with the last time I discussed during the council meeting with the new federal trade policy and some of the uncertainties that it create, you know, with many of the countries in the Pacific Rim in terms of, you know, global trade, and that also affect the travel pattern. And we're so close to the SFO, and as you well know, SFO has a heavily depended on the traveling pattern with the Pacific Rim. And so, with that, you know, and then just recently, I think there's been announced that the consumer confidence has plummeted about 11% in the, in April to a reading of about 50.8, which is one of the lowest since 1952. So, we have some challenges ahead and some uncertainty ahead. We're hopeful that this will, you know, eventually stabilize a bit. You know, I'm, I cannot be more clear about the resolve of this council in terms of our economic development initiative, right? We need to be focused on economic development, housing development, and all of the above. And this, the establishment of this Community Benefit District is another tool in our toolbox to make sure that the economic development takes place in the city in a way that it needs to happen. And it gives us, you know, the fundings that we need, it gives us the tools that we need in order to revitalize our downtown. This is an important initiative. But I also believe that important initiatives such as this, you know, needs to happen at the right place at the right time. And the timing is, it's most likely going to be a little bit better, a little bit later. And as we, you know, continue to see and monitor the situations at the, at the federal trade level, what the policies are going to bring and what, where the economy is going to go from here and where the interest rate is going to be. We want this to be a benefit. We want to ensure that this is a benefit to our downtown property owner, our downtown businesses. And during a, during a time of uncertainty, I think it just makes sense for us. It's important for us to be responsible and make this decision at a pace that it needs to be made so that we can ensure that this will give us a long-term benefit in the long run. So, I would support the staff's recommendation at this time. And then at some point when things stabilize, we can, we can pick the ball back up and look at this all over again and sort of make sure that we put all the tools in our toolbox necessary to get our economic development done. Anyone else? Councilmember Riley.
Thank you. Yes, due to those trade tariffs trade and also the economic not stable, plus our contagious rent and negative feedback, we need to hear their voice. So, for this point, I think it's better to put this project on hold. Thank you.
No, Ms. Mayor, before you take a vote, I just have some information that addresses Councilmember Nguyen's request from the last meeting that we have for you.
Please, City Manager, go ahead.
So, if, I will pass this out. So, I apologize, we don't have a slide for this, but Councilmember Nguyen asked just what would the weight be for the top 10 property owners? So, this is a spreadsheet that we put together, just that identifies what the weighted vote would be for the top 10 property owners. And of those top 10, I'll list them, City of Millbrae, 5.35%. Station 16 Apartments, which is owned by Republic Urban, is 4.99% of the vote. Millbrae Square Company is 4.80% of the weighted vote. San Francisco Water Department is 4.55%. Starwood, which owns the Weston Hotel and Aloft Hotel, the Weston is 4.18%, the Aloft Hotel is 3.22%, so they're combined, they're the largest weighted property owner at 7.4% when you combine both Starwood properties. Swift Gateway, they're the owner of the new office building on the east side of the Bard Station. They're 2.73%. Dan Rogers Realty, that owns various properties throughout the downtown, is 2.55%. The O'Rancho Hotel is 2.5%. And the Residence Inn at the Gateway Project is 2.18%. For a grand total of 37.05% as the weighted vote for the top 10 property owners.
Yeah, I'm just like what we discussed last time, you know, and this top 10 property owner list also demonstrate that four of the top 10 coming from our hotels.
Yes.
Right? And two of the 10s come from the Millbrae stations. And so, you know, with that said, as you can imagine, you know, if, I mean, and just to remember COVID, when the international travel shuts down, what it does to our TOT and what it does to our hotel operators and, and our hotel. We're blessed with, you know, a sizable TOT in our city and all these hotels who want to operate in City of Millbrae. They also will pay into a lion's share of the CBD. And so, you know, we need to make sure that the economy is in strong footing and that the Pacific Rim trade is as vibrant as they need to be so as to these hotels can benefit from the CBD assessment moving forward, rather than becoming a stress for them. So, it just strengthened my belief that, you know, taking the time that we need in order to reassess the situation in the near future is the right decision to make. Anyone else? Councilmember Rinaldi.
Is this the right time to, for these questions?
Go ahead.
Sure. So, the, the weighted vote, that's that equation you talked about earlier, where it's based on square footage, frontage, and all the other parameters we talked about earlier. I just want to get that clarified.
Yes, this is the weighted vote based on land area, frontage, and building square footage.
Okay, so there, is there any provision of changing that weight or it's locked in? Once, once this, let's say hypothetically kicks off, we're not, we won't have the ability to change that weight, right?
Well, no. But in the future, when we bring this back, there'll be an opportunity because, you know, the council will have the opportunity to, to modify the way the assessment pursuant to the law. There are restrictions under the law, but if we want to take a look at that, there's certainly going to be an opportunity to do that.
Okay, and that will be presented to the council, future council?
Yes, at the time we pick this back up, once the economy stabilizes, and then we, we bring this back to the council at a future date. As Vice Mayor had mentioned, just, just so the council and the public knows, there is a deadline to submit a tax rule to the county assessor, and that's in August of every year. So, most likely, depending on, you know, what happens with our economy, and if it does stabilize, probably the first of 2026, we'll take a look at this. And, and if things are stabilized and kind of this, what's the term that's being used nationally? Tariff turmoil subsides, then we'll bring that back to the council.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Rinaldi?
Thank you, Mayor Fung. Just going to make a couple of quick comments and say, you know, it's just real coincidental timing that we're hit with this economic turmoil. And I know a lot of thought and a lot of work from the city staff went into this proposal for a CBD. I also know there's a lot of folks out there that are really looking forward to a CBD. But like Mayor Fung had said, everything happens for a right place, right time. And as Vice Mayor Hollibur had said, this now gives us time to fine tune things and really get it ironed out. So, when the timing is right to bring it back, we can make sure that we put our best foot forward. So, unfortunate as it is, there's a time and a place, and I'm looking forward to that future time and place.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. I think we have a public comment here. City Clerk?
We do. We have a speaker slip.
We have an online hand raise. Oh, we have a speaker slip as well.
Yes, right.
We'll start with the in-house speakers, and then we'll go with the online after. Alice Quong, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all. And I believe all the council have been, including the manager and all staff working so hard, and I listen to our concern. But best things tend to good things is we bring up all the people's attention, and we all agree to try to make Mubilee Gray again. And I want to say I want to clear, clear up. CBD is a typical term, like, you are Mayor Fung, I'm Alice Quong. I cannot replace, when I'm talking about your name, people will think it's you. When talking about my name, it's me. So, new American, new City American. The typical under this proposal is CBD. And CBD should be complete kickoff. No more CBD. That's what I request. But we do want to make a best way to make our Mubilee downtown going again. And really recommend our city and the council and all of you. And I last time, the Vice Mayor and the Councilman for make a subcommittee. The subcommittee is not for CBD. It's for make Mubilee downtown enhancement. And specify our own way. We bring our own characters and our landmarks and make people really memorize why I didn't spend half day in Mubilee. We don't need to wait after those year, another year. We can do it as soon as possible. But lots CBD, lots new City American. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We have someone online?
Yes, Mayor, the speaker is Ann Snyder. Ann Snyder, please accept the mute. Thank you.
I've been trying to figure out how to say this nicely. The toughest thing about being elected officials is having to make those hard decisions, but it's also about leadership. We are in a time that is uniquely bad. But as in my nine years, we went through several uniquely bads. So, I hope again that you do not delay this. I am disappointed that some of you seem to listen to a handful of people who simply don't want to see change and don't want to spend money. And there are many, many of us who want to see downtown improve, who do not go downtown, who do not shop there because there is nothing for us to do there. I am hoping now in this interim time, and again, looking, having attended your city goals, where for five hours, four hours, you did team building, and in less than 45 minutes, you pretty much throw out, threw out everything the previous city council is. What are you going to do now? For example, if I want to go and get coffee, which means coffee beans and other stuff that beats coffee, and I can't find parking, especially with a 97-year-old woman, we don't shop. So, are you going to use this interim time to figure out how to improve parking? I have been downtown a lot the last two months, and I cannot imagine or cannot tell you how many people back into parking places, stopping everything around them. How many people, we all know it because we get the complaints, do U-turns in front of Dean's Produce. How sidewalks are not wide enough if you're in a wheelchair. And if you have to drop somebody off so that they don't have to walk, meaning mobility impaired, there is no place to do that. So, in the interim time, and going back to 2016, when we did design charrettes in the old Schneider's clothing that is still vacant, all these years later, with a big sign advertising alcohol coming in, we talked about interim steps to make downtown better, especially for people with special needs, whatever those special needs may be. You've now got that timeframe to do something because this has gone on for, for going on to 10 years, plus longer than that. I understand the difficulty. But honest to gosh, empty storefronts, we had a goal of, of an empty storefront ordinance that would mean that if you were a storefront owner and you kept it vacant for a certain period of time, at minimum, you had to make the front of the store look good, at minimum. If not, reduce your rent so that somebody is in there. Instead, if we keep Broadway looking the way it is, or El Camino Real except for by the, the Sarah Station project, looking the way it is, we look decrepit and old. And yes, I'll get the feedback from people who told me not, but I remember what it was like when I was a kid, and it doesn't have to be this way. I'm so sorry for this. It really hurts. It really hurts.
Please, thank you. Thank you for your comment. Everybody got three minutes, and I just want to make sure that we're fair. All right. Thank you so much. Any other comment from the council? I would entertain a motion. I'll second that. Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to take the stop recommendation and continue this item until a later day when we have a chance to evaluate the economy on a stronger footing. Then we can bring the discussion forefront to ensure that we continue to focus on our economic development. I'll make that motion. I have a second from Councilmember Nguyen. All right. Any other final comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Riley.
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hollibur.
Aye.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
Item number 9, passed by a vote of 5-0.
So, with that vote, item number 10, which is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a petition on behalf of the city as the owner of certain parcel and real estate and real property that would be subject to assessment in support of the initiations of balloting for the formation of a proposed Millbrae Downtown and El Camino Real Community Benefit District. I would imagine this also is a continuance in conjunction with number 9?
Correct, Mayor. We would recommend a motion and a second to continue this item indefinitely as well.
Okay, I'll make the motion to continue this item number 10 as well.
Um, Mayor, could I check in on one thing? I believe Speaker Alice Quong actually wrote that she wants to speak on both items. So, I just want to double check if she is.
Do you, Ms. Quong, would you have any further comment for us on item 10? Do you want to take the podium, please?
Getting ready my glasses. So, based on what I understand, for this item, should be the council to vote, continue for the support petition or not going to support the petition?
We're here to continue this item indefinitely until a later time.
Because you voted lie already, so.
Okay, thank you for your comment. I'll make the motion to continue this item until a later time.
I'll second that motion, Mayor Fung.
Thank you very much. Any final comment or questions? Any public comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Riley.
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hollibur.
Aye.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
Item number 10 is continue indefinitely with a vote of 5-0.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, item 11. Approval of the City Millbrae 2025 State Legislative Platform and authorizing the city manager to respond to state legislative proposals in accordance with the adopted legislative platform. Mr. Williams.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Michelle Rubiclava, who is an attorney with Nielsen Merximer in Sacramento. Michelle and her firm are partners in Sacramento, looking out for our best interest at the state capital. And Ms. Rubiclava will be providing a presentation on our 2025 State Legislative Platform. I believe she is ready to go.
I'm here. I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
We can. Thank you, Michelle.
Excellent. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you so much for having me today. Wanted to kind of present to you the 2025 Legislative Platform for the City of Millbrae. Slide, please. Today, we'll be discussing the overall benefits of a legislative platform, the purpose, the priorities, some broad policy references and recommendations for the city to consider. Slide, please. So, the purpose of the legislative platform really is to assist So the purpose of a legislative platform really is to assist your legislative advocacy team, which is myself and my colleague Jeff Neal, and our firm Nielsen Merksimer, when we're engaging senators and assembly members on their legislative members in Sacramento. It really is more or less kind of a guardrail for your legislative advocate. It's activities that you adopt in ahead of time of a legislative session that gives broad authority to the lobbyist in order to engage on the city's behalf. So some of the things that it does, obviously, is, as you'll see, it does establish some policy guidelines. Those are put together in conjunction with the city manager and assistant city managers, some department heads, and it allows the lobbyists to engage on assembly and senate bills in a timely fashion. Slide, please. So for the 2025 City of Millbury advocacy priorities, I put this slide together based on the conversations that I had with the mayor and the city council members when I came to the city and spent the day with you all. These are the four major priorities that kind of rose to the top from all of our conversations. There were other issues that we discussed that day, but more or less, everybody coalesced around these major advocacy priorities. So what this does is it allows Jeff and I to understand, like, if there's funding available for some of these priorities, to go out and seek it, to try and put the City of Millbury in the best position to be able to accomplish and execute on these priorities. Slide, please. The other thing that a legislative platform does is really a broad policy reference guidance for the advocates. It incorporates broad policy positions in general areas for, you know, supporting homelessness funds, or opposing infringement on local control, right? Those are kind of the bigger policy statements that can be incorporated into a legislative platform. Slide, please. And these are some of the broad policy areas that are included in your 2025 legislative platform. In the prior slide before, you did see that this document is a living, breathing document. It does get updated and should be updated every two years to coincide with a new legislative session. There have been times where legislative platforms, back in COVID-19, right? They talked about, like, COVID-19 response. Then you look at your platform again, and you strike that. Some legislative platforms are now talking broadly about artificial intelligence, since that's like an emerging topic, right? So this is a living, breathing document, and you should think of it as such. Slide, please. These are other broad policy statements that you will find within the legislative platform itself. Slide, please. And so I think, I don't know if this is Tom's piece, but I think this is the recommendation to the council. Slide. And I'm here to answer any questions on the legislative platform.
Thank you so much, Michelle. Thank you for all the hard work and putting this, all of this together, and also coming down from Sacramento and meeting with every single one of us. As always, appreciate you and City of Millbury. Anyone else on the council have questions or comment for our legislative representative? Councilmember Nguyen?
Thanks, Michelle, for the presentation. It was pretty helpful to see how we categorize our priorities, but given the information you shared, like, do you think it aligns with other cities you've seen and their planning? I just want to get your thoughts on, like, what you've seen with other places and how it compares to us.
Yeah, I think that every platform has two major parts to it. One is the broad policy statements, right? Like, on homelessness, on public safety, right? You will see a lot of different cities that have similar policy statements. Your advocacy priorities are very specific to Millbury. So for instance, I also represent the City of Chula Vista. One of their priorities is to bring a four-year university to the City of Chula Vista. So a legislative platform will have two major components, and it will be the very specific, unique, city-specific policy targets, and then the broader policy topics that you kind of get with cities from your region, similarly sized cities, if you're in urban versus a rural, you know, things that Cal cities are, is proposing and pushing. So I think that your legislative platform does align pretty well with other cities.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Rinaldi.
Thanks, Mayor Feng. Just want to say I'm really pleased with this legislation list here right in front of us for this platform, and in particular, item number three really interests me the most, with a secondary ingress and egress from Marina Vista neighborhood. I know that's a neighborhood with one way in, one way out, and for public safety, I think it would be a great win. So I'm very, very hopeful we can try to make something happen this year with that. My fingers are crossed.
Okay. Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else? Okay. Vice Mayor, you have anything? You're good? Okay. I don't see any public comment, speaker slip, nor any hand raise online. Okay. All right. Closing public comment. I'll entertain a motion, should anybody would like to make one.
Motion to move forward, Nadav.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi.
Second that.
We have a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Any final comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Riley.
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Holliburton.
Aye.
Mayor Feng.
Aye.
Item number 11, passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on, item number 12.
Before then, before Michelle, I would just like to really recognize the great work of Michelle and her firm, and she had mentioned Jeff Neal, who've just been fantastic partners. They've really helped us with some critical issues here in the City of Millbury, La Quinta, and things up at HCD. So I'd just like to recognize the great work and partnership of Michelle, her team, and the Merksimer Law Firm.
Yeah, you're right. Absolutely. Almost forgot about that. You know, of people, oftentimes, things, you know, you're hiring a lawyer, hiring a lobbyist, and what can you get done? But oftentimes, these things get done, you know, not necessarily so much of a legislation, but, you know, all the connections that you're able to make for us, all the consensus that you're able to build for us, and all the goodwill that you bring to the City of Millbury and be able to get things done. La Quinta being one, somebody had a grant application that was successful, hugely successful to all of us, as also others. And so, you know, I just wanted to thank you and your firm, and Jeff as well, for all the great work that you're able to bring, and all the result that you were to bring to the City of Millbury. Thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Mayor Feng. Just want to say heartfelt thank you to Michelle and your team up there in Sacramento. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that happens that is all accredited to you folks, and it's a pleasure meeting you, and thanks for moving those mountains and helping us out here in Millbury.
Thank you.
All right. All good. So item number 10, oh, I'm sorry, item number 12, authorizing the issuance of public hearing notice for water rate change for fiscal year 2025 to '26 to fiscal year 2029 to 2030, and future wholesale water rate pass through. City Manager, which please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to introduce our Finance Director, Mr. Mike Sung, for the staff presentation.
Director Sung.
All right. Thank you, City Manager Williams. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable City Councilmembers. Two weeks ago, we came to you with some information on the water rate study. Today, we're going to go ahead and recap that, and with us is actually our consultant from Bardo Wells, Alex Handler. He's actually going to be addressing the presentation. And afterwards, myself, Sam, our Public Works Director, and Alex will be available for any questions that you might have. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Alex.
Thanks, Mike, and nice to see everybody again. So I'm just going to try to make this kind of a quick recap. I know we covered a lot of this material at the last council meeting, presenting the recommendations for the water rate study. Next slide, please. Quick overview, just going to cover the schedule, a little background, and the proposed rates. Next slide. Thank you. The schedule, we've been working with the city for a few months leading up to March 14th, a meeting with the Infrastructure Subcommittee. We hashed through various options, and what we're presenting tonight are the recommendations that was also vetted by the Infrastructure Subcommittee. I know we talked about this at the last meeting, and here we are tonight, and what we're looking for is, you know, council direction to move forward, not adopt the rates, but move forward with the process, the Prop 218 process, to consider adoption of the rates. If you did that, you know, you have to get these public hearing notices out by the end of this week, and the goal would be to come back on June 10th. That's when the public hearing would be, and that's when council would be considering the proposed rate increases, with new rates set to go into effect on July 1. On the next slide, thank you, is just a quick overview of the system again. You serve over 23,000 customers, over 500 businesses, mostly residential customer base. To do that, you've got a tremendous amount of infrastructure that the city operates and maintains. You've got over 75 miles of pipelines, storage tanks, lots of other facilities. And what we see is, you know, like most Bay Area agencies, a lot of your infrastructure was put in a long time ago. It's old, it's in need of rehab, rehabilitation in upcoming years. And where does your water come from? You purchase 100% of it from San Francisco Public Utility Commission. It's extremely high-quality water, but it is a little bit expensive. Moving on to the next slide, quick background, just this graphic of your system, the colors are different pressure zones. Next slide, please. In terms of rate history, we talked about this last time, the city didn't do any rate increases from 2013 to 2017, and over that time, the wholesale water rates had gone up by 67%. So the city was running deficits, fund balances were drawn down, but you took action in 2017. You adopted five years of water rate increases to, you know, restore your financial stability, get the water utility back on with balanced budgets, and you started down that path of implementing those rate increases for the first few years. But then COVID hit, and like many agencies, the rate increases during COVID were deferred for a couple of years. Then you phased them in over the subsequent three years. So you really took five years of rate increases and spread them out over eight years, and the rates that are in place today are essentially the rates that were adopted to go into effect back in 2021, subject to, there was an adjustment, a pass-through for additional wholesale SFPUC rate increase. So that's where you're at today. Your customers are billed in Millbury once every two months via bimonthly bill, so you have a higher bill, but it's less frequent than many other agencies that bill monthly. And our take was, from looking at the finances, was that your, those rate increases you adopted in 2017, even though you spread them in over eight years, they put your water enterprise on a much stronger and more solid financial footing. However, you are facing, you know, additional financial pressures and challenges, you're going to need rate increases in upcoming years to stay on top of those. Next slide, please. It's just a quick highlight of, you know, what the key financial needs are of the water system. Number one is the capital improvements. I mentioned you have a lot of old facilities out there. A lot of them are at or approaching the end of their useful life. They're going to need reinvestment, and it's not just a one-time fix a few things. You've got so many pipelines out there, you're going to need to make sure there's an adequate funding stream in place to continue addressing the infrastructure needs, so you can continue to provide safe, high-quality water into the future. Your five-year capital improvement program has a lot of specific projects. It's about $22 million, and on top of that, the long-term needs are about $5 million per year to stay on top of all the aging infrastructure. So that's the number one priority, I think, that's impacting future rates. Number two is wholesale water rates. They're increasing, and as they increase, you have to pass those costs along to your customers. And number three is cost inflation. You know, everyone's been hit with cost inflation over recent years, and the city is not immune to that, and you're going to need to continue raising rates every year just to stay on top of escalating costs, whether it's chemicals, electricity, insurance, et cetera. So you need at least some rate increases just to tread water and keep from falling behind on top of everything else. Next slide, please. So this shows a little detail in the capital program. I won't go into all the projects, but the top of the chart shows a number of the water main replacements that the city anticipates doing. These are also coordinated often with sewer main replacements and road pavings, so they all have to kind of go together. But you've got a lot of projects, you know, Broadway, the other ones I know are priority. And in the lower part of the table, there's other improvements that are highlighted there. A big one that's needed is the La Prenda Water Tank. This is one of the city's key water storage tanks. I think it was built in 1957, something like that, so it's extremely old, needs to be replaced and seismically upgraded. But that's, you know, the summary of your capital program. Moving on to the next slide, please. Just showing the long-term trajectory of the wholesale water rates that the city has to pay for every unit of water it brings in to serve its customers. You could see rates have gone up a lot over the last 20, 25 years. There was a period from about 2010 to, then the drought hit, to 2016, 2010 to 2016, the rates more than doubled, and that hit a lot of agencies. What happened was SFPUC overcollected. They built up a balancing fund that enabled them to have no rate increases for five or six years, but the balancing fund has long since been spent through, and they're back to raising rates again. You've been hit with some significant rate increases the last few years. Good news is they're not expecting huge rate increases going forward. They've largely completed their, you know, $4 billion to $5 billion upgrade of the hatchet water system, so it's more inflation, inflationary plus rates anticipated for upcoming years. The next slide, thank you, shows just a quick overview of the water rate study. A key part of that was, we've been working with staff to develop long-term financial projections, to identify what are all the future funding needs, and evaluate different rate increases. We built in all the latest and greatest, you know, financial engineering data possible, you know, try to be reasonable, slightly conservative with our assumptions, and aim for a long-term capital funding target of $5 million per year in current dollars, which would work out to be about $5.8 million, five years down the line, when you add in 3% cost escalation. We tried to phase in the rate increases as gradually as possible, so it's not a big one-time increase upfront, and the projections indicated the need for 7% rate increases each year for the next five years. That's the level that management is also recommended by the Infrastructure Committee after evaluating different alternatives. The next slide shows, just graphically, what's happening with these rate increases. The bars show your expenses. The red line shows the revenues with the projected rate increases, and you can see, really, we're just trying to get the rates where they stay on top of the expenses and make sure they're supporting balanced budgets while you're, you know, funding all your operating costs, wholesale water supply, and generating, again, the current dollar value of $5 million per year for capital projects plus cost escalation. So next slide, I guess we'll keep moving on. Where does the money go? 100% of it goes to fund water system costs. Roughly a third of it goes for the city's operating and maintenance expenses, a third of it for wholesale water supply, and roughly a third for capital projects, so they can bounce around a little bit from year to year. So the rates really are designed, they're designed to cover your cost of service, no more, but also no less. And on to the next slide. Thank you. Showing the detail of what the proposed water rates would be with these 7% rate increases. Again, there's two components to the city's water rates. The top of the chart shows the fixed charges, fixed monthly charges that have to get paid regardless of, you know, the amount of water that's used. I think it's over 90% of your customers are at the 3/4-inch meter rate, so at the lowest rate there. Customers with larger meters who put more demand on the system pay more. And then the bottom part of the chart shows the quantity charges. These are billed based on customers' actual metered water consumption each billing period, and your water use is billed in units of 100 cubic feet. Again, most people don't think in terms of 100 cubic feet. 100 cubic feet's about 750 gallons, so the current rate of $13.47, that equates to a rate of approximately $1.80 per 100 gallons, or 1.8 cents per gallon. And with next year's proposed rate increase, for example, that would go up to $14.41 And with next year's proposed rate increase, for example, that would go up to $14.41 per 100 cubic feet. That equals about 1.93 cents per gallon. Moving on to the, to the next slide. So in addition to the 7% water rate increases, we're also recommending that the city, again, adopt authorization to pass through San Francisco Public Utility Commission wholesale water rates in excess of $7 per unit. Why $7 per unit? Well, the financial projections already assume wholesale rates are going up to $7 per unit in five years. So that's already kind of built into the base projections. This is just designed to give the city protection in case something unexpected happens, another drought, who knows what in the next five years, that you would have the protection. If the SFPUC raised their rates above $7, you would have the authority to pass that through to help maintain financial stability due to an unexpected wholesale rate increase. Now, SFPUC's rates currently 567. It may never get to $7 in the next five years, but just having that protection can be very important if something unexpected happens. Next slide, please. We just wanted to highlight the city, the customer assistance program. You offer a 25% discount to your fixed water and wastewater charges to folks who qualify based on being in PG&E's care program, which is based on income eligibility, or folks are enrolled in various public assistance programs. And the plan is that those, that discount, 25%, is going to, as the rates are increased, the dollar amount of the discount would increase as well. And again, I know the city is always encouraging folks. If you think you might be eligible, please check with the city, please apply. Next slide. You know, over the course of the last council meeting and also with our conversations with the Infrastructure Committee, you know, the question comes up, can we get by with less rate increases than 7% rate increases? And what would the impacts be? And I don't want to say you can't get by with them, because, you know, we've seen cities who need rate increases do no rate increases and just run deficits until their fund reserves are now. But we don't recommend doing that. So I just try to summarize in this slide what would happen. If you reduce your 7% rate increases to 6% rate increases, it's only 1% rate increase, but it gets compounded year after year for five years. So it ends up that you really shrink down the amount of capital projects that your rates would support at the end of year five. With the proposed 7% rate increases, the rates would support $5 million per year in current dollars. If you cut it back to 6%, you're down to, you know, $4.5 million per year in current dollars. And going back even further to 5%, further reducing the rates, you're only supporting about $3.5 million per year in current dollars. So that means a lot of projects, some of them that you're coordinating with the sewer enterprise and streets, very likely would have to get deferred, put off to future years. And you might find yourself falling further and further behind the infrastructure needs. So maybe building up bigger funding liabilities on your capital side. With less rate increases, you're obviously also generating less money each year. And even with the 7% rate increases, that's not enough to fund your capital projects over the five years. We, we've been assuming you're going to draw down fund reserves by about $2 million. But if you do anything less, it means you're going to have to draw down fund reserves more, because you'll be facing bigger deficits over the next five years while rates are being phased in. So to go to 6% rate increases, now you're looking at, you know, roughly a projected $3.5 million drawdown of fund reserves, and going down to 5%, you're, now you're drawing fund reserves down by 5 million, probably leaving you with lower fund reserves than would normally be considered prudent. So we're recommending the 7%, but I don't want to, you know, pretend you can't do something less. They're just, just take to account there are repercussions for the water enterprise finances and the projects that you want to do. Onto the next slide. Please, thank you. So what's being asked for council tonight is not taking action on the rate increases, but authorizing staff to move forward with the notice of public hearing, which has to be sent out to all the customers, property owners, aiming for the public hearing to be held on June 10th. And at that public hearing, the council always has the option of implementing something less than is what is included in the Prop 218 notice. We are recommending you include the Prop 218 notice, the 7% rate increases, and move on with the process. Moving on to the next slide. That covers it, and that's where we're at. I'll turn it back over to Mike.
And with that, we're available for any questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Director, and also the consultant online, Alex. Anyone on the council have any questions for our staff or consultant? Vice Mayor, do you have anything? No hand raised?
Nothing new since the last time we spoke.
Okay, sounds good, thank you very much. Okay, so I don't think we have any public comment on this item either. City Clerk?
We do not have any public comment on this item.
No hand raised? Okay, closing public comment on this item. If no other, I mean, I think we need to discuss the direction here. There's an, there is a increase of the rate that they are proposing by recommending by the staff. I think there need to be some direction here, council. Anyone want to get started? Nobody? Okay.
Well, so. I can start, okay.
If you just bring back one slide so that we can just have it for discussion. Mike, thank you. All right, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I was going to say that I agree with the staff recommendation to move forward with the 7% maximum increases. I know nobody likes rate increases. Nobody likes paying more, but, you know, it is an expensive service that we have. It's high-quality water. And, you know, Mike, if you're there, or Sam, if you're still at the meeting, the 22 million CIP over the next five years, that's not like a wish list, right? That's, you know, it's, it's a healthy budget, but it's not extravagant by any means. So while, you know, potentially we could fund less, that means projects are going to have to be cut out. And I think they're still important though. And so if we go with a lower increase, I think we're just kicking the can down the road. And we'll have to absorb larger increases at that time.
So, yes, Vice Mayor, the projects that are listed in the CIP are projects that are mainly, are priority projects such as a tank, as well as modernization and just overall maintenance of the system. So, you know, it's, they are projects that are truly needed.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Feng. Just echo the statements that Vice Mayor Hollibur had said. I think taking the staff's recommendation to a maximum of 7% is probably the right thing to do in this situation, given that in the past, when the city of Millbrae had deferred on raising those rates, we kicked the can down the road so far that it caught up to us in the end. And looking at the 22.5 million for capital improvement projects, that are all towards critical infrastructure like the La Prenda tank, I think it's the right thing to do. So I thought tonight was literally just public hearing to give approval for that, but didn't realize you needed a direction as well. So that would be my direction. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, I'll just repeat what I mentioned last, last time. It's critical that everyone understands this increase is, seems expensive, but it is, we don't want to get in a situation earlier where, where we have this sudden huge increase in expenses. So this is really to kind of get ahead of the problem, and in the long run will be cheaper. So I fully support this idea.
Okay, right. Councilmember Riley?
Okay, thank you for those study and presentation. I think 7% is okay for long run, like the council member mentioned. For long run will be cheaper. Thank you, we're fully support. Thank you.
Okay, either as it may, I'll entertain a motion, and then we'll move on from here.
Motion to move forward with staff recommendation.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. We have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi and a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Any final comment? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hollibur?
Aye.
Mayor Feng?
Aye.
Item number 12, passed by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, moving on. We're at 9:38. Just about finished the 12 items on the agenda tonight. Moving on to council comment. Anyone wants to get started? Okay, please. Councilmember Nguyen?
So I've only attended one committee, committee meeting, RMCP, the Resource Management Climate Protection Committee. And we went over some interesting costs, energy-saving studies. One was around restaurants. We don't think about it, but we go to restaurants, we use quite a bit of energy to cook food. And there's considerable savings. It's not just environmental protection, which is one of the key goals, but another one is we save quite a bit of money through energy, switching between gas to electric. And there's actually math to support that. The efficiency of converting electricity to heat is far better based on the study here compared to like gases when you look at BTUs compared to kilowatt hours. So a pretty, pretty eye-opening. And if we are able to implement this at a larger scale, I could see considerable savings there. So like, really, really cool stuff when it comes to future tech, just on the kitchen level. So that's all I have for, for my, my report out.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
For my report out, just reporting back from Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. First notice is that we have the bike rodeo, May 10th. Our city manager, Williams, was kind enough to remind us that in the beginning of this meeting. Second was at the BPAC meeting, our engineering team gave us a preview of the Burlingame Bike Project on Murchison Drive. There were some recommendations that were made. It's a joint project between Millbrae and Burlingame. Pretty interesting, probably be coming to council pretty soon. So guys are getting a little forewarning there. Next, we have our CERT skills test. It's going to be happening this Saturday, April 26th. This is for our Mandarin speaking class. Skills Day is a full day from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM where all the skills you learn in CERT are applied. So it's going to be a great day. I will be there, really looking forward to it. Another group of citizens that are going to be trained in case of emergency. So I highly recommend anyone who's considering it. You possibly save someone's life, a family member's life, a loved one, a friend, even your own. So check out CERT. Last but not least, two quick notices. Fire maps have been a hot topic during my listening session. It came up quite a bit. And as I further communicate with people throughout the region, a lot of people are talking about this. So two events are going on this weekend. This Saturday, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, down at San Mateo County Event Center. You have the Be Wildfire Safe and Ready. That's going to be happening, so you can learn more about it there. And then also, our Assemblywoman, Diane Pappen, will be in town in San Bruno, our neighboring town. And she's going to be having a listening session, a public session on the fire hazard severity zone maps. That's April 26th, the Saturday, 10:00 AM to noon. So two opportunities to learn more about those fire maps and help be prepared in case of an emergency. That's it.
Thank you so much, council member. Anyone else?
Simon's here, mention again for next Friday, next week, Friday, is from 4 to 5, 4 to 10:00 PM. It is 16, Station 16 for Night Market. Please bring your friends, family to enjoy our Millbrae Night Club. Night Market is the only one from Peninsula to San Jose. Only one, thank you.
All right, looking forward to it. Is there anything, Vice Mayor?
Just briefly, I attended the commute.org meeting last week. There was an update on state transportation funding. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about the multi-county potential ballot measure that I think at this point, San Mateo County would be considered an opt-in county if that were to go on the ballot in 2026. But there's also, I think, a more pressing need for sort of a stopgap measure. I think it's $2 billion in the state budget that they are working on now. There was a request to, for each, for commute.org as an entity, and also for the individual cities to rally support for that measure. So perhaps something, that's something that we can look into for an upcoming meeting. And then there was also an update on the transit, the shuttle routes for commute.org. I believe there were 17 routes that they had applied for funding. The costs have gone up quite a bit, so they're going to need to ask the employer partners if they're willing to step up and pay, and if not, try to figure out how to fund those shuttles. Some more to come on that, but that's all that I have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
And sorry, one last thing. Thank you to Elaine and Lori and the rest of our city staff for helping to facilitate the remote meeting access tonight. Thank you.
Okay, I'm finally, Anaheim. All right, so as far as myself is concerned, I'm just thankful that the High Speed Rail settlement is now completed. And I just wanted to say, city manager, if it's appropriate, we need to start thinking about the realignment of California Drive, the engineering designs, and how to move this forward. Also, Sam, I understand, you know, we need to make sure, you know, this, you know, your next few days is as productive and as also as peaceful as it needs to be. But at the same time, I think, you know, this is an opportunity for us to move this California Drive thing forward. You know, if the earlier we can get some design going, perhaps we can even seek out some funding from the state. You know, maybe we can talk to Michelle Rubicava and see if there's, you know, added to her legislative platform to see if we could get some opportunity to look into through the state legislature to find some resources to help with the engineering design and envisioning. We have the vision, but, you know, we need to put some design on paper here. And then we can actively go after some funding, perhaps even at the county or the state, to try to get California Drive redone. So that's one initiative. The Vice Mayor mentioned the three or four county measures to prevent the transit agency from a fiscal cliff. Yes, San Mateo County will be an opt-in county. We still have to discuss the exact way if we are to participate in that. There are some 30-some million dollars from Caltrain that is going to be in need of funding, and another 36 roughly for BART. What I will say is, you know, transit needs to be successful here in San Mateo County. I do understand a lot of folks depends on it. It needs to be successful. At the same time, you know, there need to be accountability as well, and need to be proper representation as well from this county to ensure any contribution, if any, is used properly so that the surface gets better, and then there'll be better public safety and cleanliness at the stations, and then ensuring that this is a temporary measure rather than a perpetual measure. So more discussion on that to come, but I think, you know, we're really heating up that discussion, discussion now. Another thing is that we had some public comment about, you know, garbage rates. So city manager, perhaps, we can direct some of our staff to reach out to Mr. Sandrini, and maybe even South City Scavenger to discuss with him, to try to alleviate some of the questions and answer some of his questions and concern that he has. And if that is, if he needs more than that, we perhaps even consider agendizing a future meeting to bring South City Scavenger to come back and give us some information on the garbage rate and what that contract means to us as a city. That's something we can consider in the future. But I think it would be a good idea to reach out to Mr. Sandrini to have city, have South City Scavenger directly address his concern so that he get to hear firsthand the proper information. Because getting to the facts is extremely important here. All right, so that's my recommendation for the staff to address the public. Unless anybody have anything else to share, I would adjourn this meeting tonight at 9:47 PM. Thanks, everybody.